Is seated here for appointments, so they do not have to stay late. How's that sound?
Yeah.
Is that the pleasure of the board?
That is the pleasure.
Pleasure.
I'm sure they all want to stay.
The board's giddy because the board had ice cream and brownies just before the meeting.
And cookies.
Okay. We'll go ahead with the minutes of the Select Board meeting of June 23rd, 2019. The minutes were presented in the packet. Any corrections or adjustments or amendments to those minutes?
Perhaps one correction.
Okay, please.
Nineteen one twenty-nine. Oddly enough, it has to do with me. I think Mr. Burgoyne asked Mr. Eno if, rather than is, he would like to serve.
Love those. Little typos.
Where is that, nineteen one?
Nineteen one twenty-nine.
Mr. Burgoyne asked Mr. Eno.
If instead of is.
Yeah.
If he would like to serve.
I guess I have the wrong Select Board packet.
No, nineteen one two-nine.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
It's, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm, I second that. I would move to change.
Okay, so with that correction, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented with the one correction of June 24th, 2019, as presented.
And I now have the right minutes in front of me. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. It's a vote. We'll move on to warrants fifty-four for fiscal year nineteen and our first warrants for fiscal year twenty, which are warrants one and two. You have, the warrants were made available to you in the packets and Chris, were you doing the warrants?
Catherine, I did.
Catherine did the warrants. Catherine, I defer to you.
I even showed up.
Nice.
That was amazing. Okay, so warrant fifty-four. This was, which one, Eric? This was the end of year.
Fifty-four, this was the regular warrant for the last fiscal year.
This is the last one.
Right, this was the ending one for June.
Potentially. You might have one more, but.
Okay.
And this is just tying up loose ends from the fiscal year, right?
Yes, and so just looking down through that, the big thing there was the, one of the payments for the Marinacook Lake Outlet Dam construction, almost forty-eight thousand to H.E. Callahan. Other than that, everything was really pretty much normal expenses, and I think you have all seen this warrant. A few Heritage Days expenses, some architectural work for Dirigo. Warrant one.
Why don't we dispense with the warrants one at a time?
Okay, sorry. So the total was sixty-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars and five cents.
Are you moving that?
I would move that amount, yes.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Warrant fifty-four for fiscal year 2019 has been moved and seconded in the amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars and five cents. Is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor. It's a vote. Thank you.
There were two warrants for state fees. They were one A and one B, and then there was a warrant one and a warrant two, which was for payroll. So the state fees are the motor vehicle excise taxes that we do every Friday. And the, let me go back and do this correctly. So those state fees came to twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Payroll was sixteen thousand, five ninety and ninety-five cents. The big item was the three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar warrant. There is a school payment in there. The payment has gone up this year. I think it's about twelve thousand? Were we at two ninety-seven last year?
Yeah, it's something like that, yeah.
And now the.
So is this a fiscal year for the RSU of twenty? Yes, so this is their first?
This is their first of twelve.
Yes, so the amount for the regional school unit thirty-eight is three hundred nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine and thirty-nine cents. We paid our annual dues to May Municipal Association. That was thirteen thousand. We, oh, this is going to drive me crazy. We paid our annual dues to KB Cog of four thousand, three hundred and one. There was a fire department, I'm just going through the large ones, a fire department bill for six thousand, six hundred and eighty to fire tech and safety. We paid the full dues for Cobbessie Watershed District of seventy-six hundred dollars. There is more motor vehicle here.
Pretty much does, I think, yeah.
I think I've pretty much hit it. Oh, we paid the town of Winthrop, five, essentially five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
And that's for ambulance services.
That's right, and I think that's quarterly.
Well, it's either ambulance or dispatch, one or the other, yeah.
Whichever it was, I believe it was quarterly. It's dispatch or ambulance. So there's a total amount that I will move of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents.
So I have three ninety-one, one twenty-nine.
Sorry, that would be for all of the warrant.
Okay.
Yes, including the payroll.
So we're moving three ninety-one, one twenty-nine, point oh-three.
Yes, please. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one and two for the fiscal year 2020 in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and three cents. Is there any discussion? So I have one, and that is the three oh-nine K for the RSU. What was the number? Do you remember off the top of your head approximately last year, Eric?
I think it was two ninety-seven.
Two ninety-seven?
Yeah.
So the assessment's up about twelve. Twelve.
Yeah, I think it's like two nine seven nine zero eight or something like that.
Okay.
It's about a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand raised from last year.
Ruth?
Yes.
Are these structured as payments of the same amount throughout the school year, or do they vary based on?
No.
They're flat across.
Yeah.
Yeah, except for the last one might have a little small adjustment, but yeah.
Well, do they have their final number yet?
They do. This is, this is what, this is what we owe them definitively.
Okay. Because they had a warrant article that gives money back to the towns if their, if the money coming from the state was greater than they had planned on.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I believe that is true, so I want to take back at that.
We want to make a note.
I'm making a note.
Would that be a payment or just an adjustment in the total amount we owe?
They would probably just make an adjustment and.
What we did last year, I think it was in August.
It was in August.
That they did that. They took it off of the total.
Okay.
And then they readjusted so that we had eleven equal payments after that.
But I'm hoping we'll have that.
Yeah.
We need to know what that number is before we set our tax rate.
I thought this was the final number after they've, I think, I'm, I don't, can't tell you exactly why I think this, but fairly certain that this is the number that's after the adjustment.
Well, they did know earlier this year, so you're, you're probably right.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll make a note of that as well.
We'll just verify it.
Yeah, we'll both verify that.
Okay, so we do have that motion on the floor. Do you need me to repeat the motion?
No.
No, all in favor. Okay, it's a vote. Affirmative. We agreed to take out-of-order appointments to committees, so do we have Amy, Matt, and Brandy here? Hi, guys. How are you?
Hey!
So this is really just an opportunity for you to introduce yourself to the board, get appointed, because that's going to happen. And then answer any questions that the board may have of you, and usually they don't. So who would like to go first? I have Amy Cunningham to the Recreation Board. Would you step right up to the microphone?
All right.
Hi, I'm Amy Cunningham. I have two kids in my elementary school, and I hope to come to rec teams during the year. And I have a food truck, so they might know me from that.
Yes, I think we'll see you at Heritage Days, yes?
Uh, yes, possibly.
Yes, I think we're, I think it's on the schedule, yes.
Oh, all right.
So yes, we will.
That's right, we will. That's excellent, yes.
What's the name of the food truck?
Trucking Good Food.
Okay, yeah, they're on the schedule.
That's it, yeah, that's right. We hope it all works out.
All right.
Yeah. And, and do you know all the folks on the rec board? Is that how you got involved?
Yes, yeah, um, I am very well to the board and approached me and I said, "Don't do it."
Cool, excellent.
I'd like to see some of our rec sports programs become a little stronger, become like more of a field and local middle school, regional sports.
Well, we are so happy up here, those of us who don't dye our hair, to see people with lighter shades.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Sorry to embarrass anyone. But Amy, I'm going to go ahead and move your appointment to the Recreation Board for a term that ends six-thirty, 2022.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? I didn't even ask for discussion.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you for volunteering.
Who next?
Uh, Matt is going to join us next. Hi, Matt. So this is for Recreation Board as well?
I like it.
If you would introduce yourself very briefly.
Yep, my name's Matt LaJoy. I also have two kids, well, one kid in the elementary school and one kid coming into pre-k this year. And I became introduced to the rec board through coaching T-ball last year and this year. And that's where I got my interest in joining the team, joining the rec board. I own the sensory gym in Farmingdale, so I'm familiar with interacting with the town, setting things up for, you know, for young families and look forward to being a part of that in Reedfield.
Great.
Great, awesome.
I really appreciate that. Can I have a motion in reference?
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt LaJoy to the rec board for a term starting tonight and ending on six-thirty, 2022.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Matt LaJoy, excuse me.
LaJoy, yes.
And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Thanks, man.
Get those breakthroughs. Brandy Nelson, right?
Come on.
Hi, Brandy.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
If you would just say hello to the board and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brandy Nelson. I live here.
Okay.
All right.
That qualifies me, right?
That qualifies.
That qualifies you.
My fa, oh, yeah.
Tell us what your interest is in doing this.
Um, well, I have a little boy who's six, and I really love fun. I especially love family fun.
Yeah, great, good.
I think that the rec board's doing a fantastic job of lining things up and all that, and I think that it would be fun to be a part of that and planning and.
Great.
Yeah, getting a little more involved.
Well, we really appreciate you volunteering for that and being a part of that. Could I have a motion in reference to Brandy's?
Yes, I would move to appoint Brandy Nelson to the rec department for a term beginning tonight and ending on six-thirty, 2022.
Second, please?
Second.
I do want to have a discussion. I just want to say, Brandy, my favorite line from your thing is, "I've wanted to get involved in the community, but I'm not one for politics." I hope you, like, that is, and I'm saying this to all the people, all of the people. It doesn't, that's so not a part of this. It's, it's, and, and I think it's good because sometimes people think, oh, I'm going to get in, I don't want to be in like po, it's not. It's not one bit. It's just, like you said, you want to have fun, you want to help do family stuff.
Yeah.
It's awesome, just be awesome.
Cool.
Cool, yeah.
So, we have the motion on the floor.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you so much, all three of you, for volunteering. You're welcome to stay while we do some more dry stuff, or you can just sneak right out.
All right. But we want to, so impressed with you young people coming in and volunteering. That's great.
Yes. Good job, young people.
Well, I'm not young, so.
Go. Yay, all right, we'll keep, we'll keep going, we'll keep going, that's it, young people.
Okay, thank you for entertaining those, and we'll do the appointment to the KB Cog General Assembly in normal order. So we'll move on to Select Board communications, so we just did have our, our retreat. It was about three and about a quarter hour retreat where we reviewed our goals from the previous year. We began working to present goals for the forthcoming year. And at a future meeting, probably the next meeting, we will actually pass those goals. So they will probably be either in the next packet as a consideration item, or they'll be in the next packet as a draft item for whatever reason, if we feel we need a little bit more time with them. But I want to thank all the board members for participating in that session. So other members of the board that would like to say anything tonight?
I would.
Please?
Have we located the Boston cane yet?
Yeah, we, well, the cane itself is downstairs in the hallway.
Okay, but is it ready to be?
The current recipient is still alive, as far as I'm aware, so.
Yeah, but he's not in Reedfield.
Okay. That's a problem then.
Just, so you know.
So we should, we should find someone to replace?
Okay.
You could do it at Heritage Day someplace.
You could.
That's a good idea. That's about heritage, right?
We could, we could announce it during the shizzle set.
Yeah.
I think that's awesome, let's, um.
If the resident is able, I know that other times in the past when we've done it, they haven't been inclined to come to a public event, so we have often done it at someone's house, if that is more.
Their idea.
Comfortable to them.
Well, however they're comfortable doing it.
Yes. So I would just ask that, depending on age, I mean, if you're a hundred and three, we can't exactly expect you down at the beach maybe, so.
Might be a real swinging elder person, that's.
It could be.
All right, I made a note to ask around for candidates.
He has moved. Grace, he has moved away.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we don't actually give out the cane itself anymore, correct? We leave that here at the town office.
For ceremonial purposes, we give a, we do a presentation.
We're like any government body, we take it back.
We take it back, yeah.
And we keep it here, but they are the official holder.
Yeah, absolutely.
They just don't actually have it.
Yep.
Okay, any other board members?
I just want to say, come out, check out Heritage Days. We have, we have really started to finalize the things we've done. We have signs out August ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and my little thing, as I'm saying, is you can remember the dates. August is the eighth month, so when you write the date, it's eight, nine, ten, eleven.
There we go.
Dun 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 dun. And check us out on Facebook. The Facebook page is a great way of finding out stuff, all kinds of things. We're still looking for vendors, makers, crafters. We have music, Tom Giordano at DeJardins and Simon Quist, all Reedfield guys. We have the shizzle playing at two. It's a great band. They play all kinds of music. They're doing their family-friendly show at two o'clock, and it's just going to be an amazing thing. I just want to give you an idea that I posted the schedule of events on Facebook, and I boosted the post, the meaning that I asked for Facebook to show it to more people, and I paid for it. Thirty-two hundred people saw that, and it came through there, and they looked at it, and they somehow, you know, interacted with it and stuff like that. So it was, I really hope that that translates into folks being there. It's been really nice to work with all the different groups, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the board?
Yes, I have a brief report out from the Solid Waste Recycling Committee that meant last week there were two items that came up that we had concerns about, both from safety issues. I just wanted to make people aware publicly. Our meeting was public also. In the swap shop, we've been having continued problems with what types of materials are being left. Things that need to be paid for are being stuck in there. Things are being put in the wrong places, in the middle of the walkways, and also up high. And we have no volunteers currently. And we would like to keep the swap shop open, but the committee recommended that the town manager be authorized to, I'm going to get this correct, to close the swap shop if it becomes a nuisance. Not on a permanent basis, but if need is there for safety. So if people could please use the swap shop in the best manner possible, we would really like to have it open and safe. And then the other issue was about political activity, which would include any fundraising or petition signing or campaigning. We have, we made a motion and passed it, asking the town manager to please rewrite the policy. It was, it's not an ordinance, but there was a policy made by the Select Board in 2011, and it needs to be revised. So we had asked that all activities stop until it can be revised to be safe for everyone. The transfer station is an active quasi-business atmosphere where a lot of traffic passes by, a lot of dangerous equipment is used, and we just want to make sure everybody is safe. So I just wanted to give that update.
Thank you, and thank you to that committee for their, all their good work and consideration. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move along then to staff reports. So Eric, which one are you going to start with?
I'll start with the town manager report this time around. So this report is more or less for the period running from the last Select Board meeting, so about a month ago through today. Let's see, maintenance and infrastructure, demolition work is underway at the Marinacook Lake Outlet Dam. That project has been a long time coming, but we're starting to see the, the real physical activity that, that really matters to the dam. There was some riprap work done last, last winter, fall and winter, but that really didn't have any impact on lake level. And so this is the real work that really matters to the residents of our community, and this repair will allow us to manage that lake level much more effectively than we have in the past. Essentially, it has been just open, and the level it is is the level whatever drains out. We haven't been able to have any control over it. This will allow us to have a couple feet of control for winter and summer filling and draw downs. So I'm very pleased to see that happening, and I want to thank Catherine for coming to the last meeting to keep an eye on that and participate. And also, I want to thank Larry Perkins for his role so far in acting as our project coordinator for the town, project agent. But also thank Roland Cody, who has stepped in. Larry's had to step back for a little while, so Roland is on, on top of that. And these are people that are offering professional assistance to us, which is, which is a wonderful thing to have these people that have been in the profession of engineering and design for a long time give us advice on what we're getting from the contractors, what we should expect. So it's been wonderful to have their help. We received just one bid for repair work at the Torsey Pond Bridge and Dam. That one did include an error, so I didn't bring that forward. I figured it wasn't worth spending the time on. We will be reissuing that bid next, or later this, later this summer for work to be completed next year. That work, we do now have something of an idea of the, of the range. I think the Reedfield share is going to be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars. And that's to repair, repair the bridge abutments and area underneath the bridge. Torsey Pond Association will be taking care of the work to the dam. They're connected, they're contiguous, and that number seems high, but it's actually not that far off. I don't believe, we spent close to twenty-five thousand to repair the box culvert under Old Kent Hill Road, which is a much smaller structure, and that was two years ago. So that's moving forward. July roadside mowing is complete. We'll be doing roadside mowing again in the fall. And this is the first year we'll be fully on that twice-a-year cycle that we've been shooting for. So to me, that's a milestone, being able to have the equipment, the staff, the stability to make that stuff happen and keep people safe by keeping visibility.
What did we use for that?
We used our town tractor and disc mower.
As a sickle mower, okay, gotcha, I gotcha.
With a cover.
With a cover, yeah.
Yeah, well, I remember that. I just want to, I just didn't know, yeah, that's good, excellent.
Yeah, no, so I'm, I'm pleased with that. And potholes, we've been fixing potholes. We don't have too many in town, so we can do them all in a day. But if anybody sees one show up, please give us a call.
Yeah, just as I was gonna, I was like, you know, Eric always says call, and there was one on Sturdivit Hill Road, right as you come up, and I was like, and it was Phil, I was like, yay, Eric.
What about the, the repair on Church Road that seems to have settled fairly radically in the vicinity of the Union Meeting House? Is that going to be something that's going to have to be milled and repaved?
Settlement. Are you talking about the, it's?
The patch?
Maybe closer to the, the Grange. Yeah, there's, there is an area that needs to be filled. I believe there was a water pipe access connection made to the, the public water system, and that's what caused that settlement. So I'll need to talk to the school, who I think had the connection made, and the contractor as well, and see how they want to go about getting that fixed. But that definitely should be a repair made by either the property owner or the contractor. It shouldn't come out of the cost of the town of Reedfield, in my view. Because it was a connection they cut into our roadway to do it, so.
And they didn't leave it in the same condition.
Well, they did for a while, but it, the earth does settle if it's not compacted.
I think it was done wintertime, if memory serves.
Yeah, and it was probably been a year anyway.
It was frost in the ground to start with, and there was no compaction, so it was just waiting to happen, and it's pretty bad.
Yeah. All right, Church Road.
Does that actually count as a pothole that has to be remedied immediately, or?
It's bigger than a pothole.
It's bigger. It's kind of a gradual dip. If you go on the speed limit, you don't feel it too much, but most people are flying through there, so.
True, man.
Dip in road.
It's basically a square cut.
Yeah, and it kind of, yeah. All right, repair.
I can't get online again.
That's odd that that's happening. So, transfer station, EcoMaine should be on site at least once, if not more, this summer. And we have a chance that they might be able to attend our Heritage Days Festival and do some public education and outreach there. So that's good news, that's exciting. We are very close to purchasing the gatehouse or the attendant booth. I don't want to call it the gatehouse, because that's not really what it is. For the transfer station, that'll allow us to have the staff, instead of running around in circles, running from vehicle to vehicle, actually standing in one spot and moving just in a, a, a small area from one vehicle to the next to check loads, collect money, move people through. It'll be a much more efficient way of operating, and it might back people up a little bit at that one point, but in the end, it will reduce queue times significantly and be a much more efficient use of our staff time, which means we can spend more time getting things done, like cleaning the swap shop, organizing, directing customers. So I'm very excited about that as well. One onsite inspection by MMA at the transfer station did identify some issues in the safety realm, but fortunately, there were no major issues. It was all little stuff that we could touch up, improve on, but no, no major safety issues. They did pick up some assets that we hadn't had on our insurance policy, so anytime they can pick up some value, that's good. They typically don't charge us any extra when they pick up something, because we're really kind of a blanket coverage anyway. But at least then, if there's an issue, we're more able, more quickly able to get some reimbursement. Second draft of the revised Transfer Station Operations Manual was reviewed by the SWRC. They have been providing excellent feedback and comment on that, and I've already heard back from a few members on that second draft. So we'll have a, a final version very quickly that we can put into operation. This updates the operations manual, that, it must be from nineteen ninety-two or earlier. It's a, it's a very, very old document, really doesn't reflect how we do operations. Didn't even have anything about the new compactor for recycling, which has been in place for a decade probably. So that'll be a great improvement there. And I am also, as Catherine noted, working on a, an update to that policy on political activity. But really, it's a broad policy, and I'm referencing it more as a, you know, a non-transfer station-related activity. Anything that doesn't have to do with the operation of that facility, we want to make sure that it, it doesn't interfere with what's happening there, so working on that. With respect to administration and personnel, I am pleased to announce that we have our new code enforcement officer on, on staff now. We finalized the hire today. He's also a licensed plumbing inspector, fifteen years of experience in plumbing and code work, plus several years in town management, and of twenty years in assessing. So really. So really talented guy, very happy to have him, and I think he'll be a good, a good officer for us. The annual review process for municipal staff is underway, and we should have the annual reviews completed by the end of this month. Thirty-day notices have been sent out for past due taxes, and I mention this only in wanting to remind folks that we do have a lot of resources available at the town office and programs that we can help reduce that tax burden if appropriate. We have local property tax assistance programs. We can help with other areas of expense in order to free up some, some money, and we'll even talk to you about how to help organize your, your bills and your expenses so that you can make these payments, because the last thing we want to do is foreclose on a property. And over the past couple of years, we've been focusing more and more on preventing that from happening, so I'm, we're really trying to be more proactive in getting to people before these issues come up. And so that's my town manager's report. Any questions?
No, I would just, well, actually, I do have one question. On the Torsey Road dam and bridge, do you anticipate getting more than one bid?
Yes, we were actually surprised we only had that one, and we weren't sure why. Of course, we can't do too much asking, but we've done some, and I expect we'll have probably two or three when we put it out to bid again. We're going to change the scope slightly and, and again, try to be more proactive in seeking contractors to put in on that work, because it really, it's complicated, but it's nothing like Moranakook, and I think it's something that a lot of local folks could, if not manage, but certainly get a piece of, so.
Okay, great. And then I, just for the record, on behalf of this select board, want to thank Roland Cody and Larry Perkins for their work. That's really appreciated.
It's tremendous.
So go on to the treasurer's report.
Can I, also related to Torsey, does the association have its share in hand yet to do the dam? Seems to me it would be a shame to, to do our half and not do the bridge at the same time. That might be counterproductive.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, but that, that was one reason why we were working on an RFP and a bid process, was to help them understand what the cost would be. Right now, we're looking at the work happening in the fall, really September onward, September, October of 2020. So they now have a really good idea of how much money they're going to have to come up with, and they're working towards that goal. They had their annual meeting two weeks ago, I believe, here, and they're, they're very active in coming up with their share. And the partnership we've established, we have a memorandum of understanding with them, really does set out those expectations, that they come up with their money, we come up with ours. And I think that they're well underway. They've got some healthy reserves, they've increased their dues, and they're trying a lot of different angles to come up with that money, and I have every confidence they will.
They will? That's good. It'd be nice to do it as one project and not.
Really, that's the only way to do it if we're gonna, because their, their, their work really needs to be done in the dry. Ours would be benefited by that, but it's not absolutely required. If we're not sharing some of those costs, it would almost become cost prohibitive for them as an individual entity. But again, it's just a roll of the dice, who owns the dam? We own the one down at this end, they own the one up here, so.
And that's a good way to be.
Truly.
But that was the understanding in the memorandum of understanding, was that we would be doing it together.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have a clear split of which part of the project is, has ownership to which party.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so this is for the month of June, which does include some summary statements about the fiscal year. However, we are just getting started with the audit, and I haven't had a chance to do the analysis following the closeout of the year, so that'll be probably in August that we'll have a more complete assessment of where things are. But I've got some good news to start off with. But I'll start, I'll back up for the month of June. Check reconciliation complete through June 30th, and our accounts were in balance, and we didn't have any unusual activity, no bounce checks or anything like that. The audit is underway. We've got scheduled site visit for, I believe it's the 23rd of July. Yeah, where is it? FY, begin field work, July, July, July 30th, that's what it was. I thought it was the 23rd, but it's the 30th. So we'll have field work starting on July 30th. The budget, following the annual secret ballot vote on the FY20 budget, the schedule was revised. So I do have a draft scheduled for the FY21 budget process. Of course, a lot of that depends on the makeup and availability of the budget committee, but if we keep the same template, we are ready to go with a draft, and I'll be bringing that to the select board next month for, for review, so you can see where we're headed and comment on the process and what you think about it. Let's see, Trio Conversion, we use a program called Trio for our software for audit, excuse me, for accounting and audit work, and that has been around in municipal world for probably twenty years plus. It was a main-based company, it's been sold to a company out of state. They're doing work to improve the backbone of that program and some of the functionality, so we are in the process of converting from the old version to the new version of that, and that's going to be happening this month. We do, we've had one training session, we'll have another, and we'll have a conversion, I believe in about two weeks, to the, to the new version. And then comments on the June numbers. Revenues and expenditures should be around 100%, where probably, you know, somewhere near between 95 and 105 on most of them. There are a few anomalies out there that are, that are well above or below, but many of those are in areas such as capital expenditures and roads, where we've seen a lot of expense, and we haven't actually done the adjustments to pull the money from the reserve accounts to show that offset. So it looks like it's, it's 1,200% or something expended, but we, of course, do have the money and reserves to, to cover that. Areas that show overages outside of that would include code enforcement and some of the general, general government as a result of attorney's fees. However, those overages are more than offset by revenues, and we do have some additional adjustments to make for that as well. For example, utilizing some of the contingency from, from the general fund in order to offset those legal expenses that weren't anticipated, so that doesn't come out of the general fund in that way.
Excuse me, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting five minutes.
I'm not sure that's right. It seems as though, 7:10? Yeah, we should have.
Well, I have 7:15, but I don't, I think we probably ought to go to 7:30.
Okay, so extended 15 minutes?
Fifteen.
Okay, good. I'd like to move to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I was just confused there for a second.
I'm with you, homie.
So take me through the mechanics of using the contingency fund. Will a vote happen at the board level?
Yeah, for, for a use of contingency, that would be the most appropriate way to do it.
So we'll see this next month, probably.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Or, or in the next month or two with these audit adjustments that we're working on. If we can do some of that work upfront, it makes the auditor's job easier. They've got one less funky number to look at, you know, for example, the admin department being overspent by 10 grand, so that, that would resolve that.
Okay.
So that will come back to you. Let's see, yeah, so the overall impact for the year, it looks like we're going to be ahead of the game by 120 to 150,000 dollars, which is, which is good, that'll go right into the reserve, and that's actually not too far off from what we budgeted for revenues outside of designated funds that would carry forward and then come forward into the general, the general fund. So I think that we're on track there, and.
That's great news.
It is great news, and it's also good that we have some big expenditures coming up so that we can then keep that reserve balance in check, much as we discussed throughout the budget process. So all of that appears to be coming in the way that we had hoped it would.
Well, and it'll make us easy, it'll make it easier when we go on the bonding level that we'll be very confident that all of the sources we plan to pull out of reserves, we'll have the full ability to do that.
Yeah, they'll be there and probably then some.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah. All right, so that concludes my treasurer's report. Any questions on, on any of that?
I, is there another agenda item on where we're at with the town buildings projects? Or can you give us a very brief update on the timeline for those moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, we've completed the geotechnical work, and we'll be moving forward with starting the planning board process to get permits for the work this month, and I expect we'll be picking back up very quickly with the engineers to get the RFP out for the roof work to the library as a priority, followed by the, the completion of the design work for the fire station. And we've already had some discussions about how to address the roof as well as the second floor egress that we've been talking about for that as well, so.
And would we expect that that roof project will happen before snowfall?
Yes.
Excellent.
It simply must.
Did you like how I gave you a nice long window there?
It's a long window, and we are going to need it, I think, because there's a lot happening between now and then, and we want to make sure that we're allocating the resources, because there is a little bit of play between the fire station and the library. So we're going to be a little bit further along before we have a fuller picture of what each of those might be, and it might even change once we get bids back in for the library, so. But all that said, yes, thank you for the, the long window, and I think we're going to use a fair amount of that, so, yeah.
Great.
Do you have a finalized agreement yet with the private property owner for the septic work?
Uh, private property, um, no, the septic work's all on our property.
I thought there was shared use, and we were going to be talking about some level of shared expense for that.
Okay, yeah, so, so the shared expense, that would be separate, and no, we have not finalized that agreement. We haven't even gotten to that point yet with them, because we don't know what the cost is going to be yet, so, yeah, we're still a ways off on that. But that is a reminder to try to, I guess I'm not sure what we can do to move that ahead.
Until you have a number, you probably can't, other than just say this may be coming, so be prepared.
I'll make a note to get a letter out to let them know that, yeah, that's right, because we, we had talked about that, and then I said, well, you know, we're going to be expanding the project, adding cost, adding components, but yeah, I'll, I'll work on a letter to.
Right, but some of the upgrade components, for example, the fact that you can drive onto it with heavy equipment, would not be borne by the shared people.
That's exactly right.
That's all, because we want to do that.
Yep, that's exactly right.
But there is a, there is a shared cost.
There is, yeah, a certain proportion of it, and I'll, you know, I'll, I'll frame out some of that stuff in a letter and send it to the, the property owners, which would be the Cornerstone Cafe Building and the.
Merrill.
Merrill, the old bank building. So those are the two partners that we would have in that.
And we'll make sure there's enough room in there for the bean hall to be continually available, right?
I don't know, the building expansion is going to get closer to the septic, so I don't know.
Oh, boy. I don't want the bean hall closer to the septic.
Yeah, I don't, I think we need to, I can't, you can't feed me minds like that. Let's move on.
Thank you, thank you for those reports.
Yeah.
We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the cemetery committee for their minutes of April 17th and May 15th, 2019, and the conservation commission for their minutes of May 14th, 2019. Are there any members of the public who would like to address us? Seeing none, we'll move on. We will appoint representatives to the KVCOG General Assembly. KVCOG is a Canterbury Valley Council of Governments, and that's an organization we belong to with other governments, mainly towns. I don't think there are any school districts in there.
Don't believe so.
Yeah. So I did not talk to Marty Hannish, who has been sort of a citizen member of that assembly. I just have not done that. I do believe he want, did not want to continue.
No, he told me he was done.
Yeah. So we have two representatives. I've been a representative, and I basically go to the semi-annual meeting, so we're looking for one or two others.
Well, we're dealing with them on this Reedfield Enterprise Fund.
Okay.
And this new Laura Sears, I think she has good intentions, but I think she's overworked.
Well, I think KVCOG's a bit disorganized.
Yes.
To be blunt about it.
You were just blunt about it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, do we, we pay for the next year? Do we have to think about before we do it again? Are we getting anything from these people?
I think that Marty indicated that Hannish, and he served on their board of directors, that it would be good for us to review the value.
Yeah, absolutely.
To review the value?
Yeah, to review the value. I'm very much in favor of trying to figure out how we can do things collaboratively with other governments, so I want KVCOG to be successful, and, and I hope that we can find the value either, and, and some of the value may not be, I mean, some of it may be just in the salt purchasing and stuff like that. I'm sure how you can assign numbers there, but I'm sure we can parse them out.
We can try, yeah.
But we certainly get some advantage there, right?
We do, yeah, we get a couple thousand dollars at least every year, so.
So that's half of what we.
Yeah, I mean, and that's just a round number, but it, it is a sizable benefit compared to paying either what we, what the contractors around here are getting, or what we typically see from the state of Maine, so.
Did you beat the state bid?
Typically, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Really? Wow.
Okay, so.
I'd like to nominate Chris Salmons and Bruce Bregg to serve as our representatives on the KVCOG for the next year.
I second that.
So Ralph will say it hasn't years passed.
Do either of the elected officials have an interest in being on the KVCOG Board of Directors? I don't, and.
Was that what Marty was on?
That's what Marty was on, and I think, but I think he served for a year before he did that. Not sure. He's kind of a special case, because he had a financial background that they wanted to use.
Yeah, yeah, they were okay with him not being an elected official.
But we don't have to put them on the board of directors, right?
No, we don't, we would just be in the General Assembly, and we'd go to the two meetings.
Chris, do you have any interest in being on the directors?
I kind of like to find out why it's not working.
Fail you.
That might be the way to do it.
I fail you.
Do you want to be president, vice president?
Can't you just be a member?
You could be, you could be, it will add some meetings to you. So there's the General Assembly, and I think there's like a, there's one General Assembly meeting a year, and I think there's one kind of off-cycle meeting as well.
Yeah, it's pretty low intensity.
Yeah, so that's, that's the General Assembly. The Board of Directors, why don't we do this? Let's, let's go ahead and approve these, this nomination, and then Eric or somebody can check, or you could check, and just find out how often the Board of Directors meet, and if, if you're interested in that, you could, we could just enter that information.
Well, it, it doesn't matter how often they meet.
Okay. They meet twice a week?
So maybe, if they meet twice a week, then they really are in chaos.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We don't know that much more about it.
You would, you would fill us out with both of us, with, with Chris being interested in the Board of Directors, and that would be good. That would help us dig into.
We'll know better in a year.
Finding the value and so forth. Okay, so.
So we have a motion?
You have the motion, right?
Right, and it's done.
Did we have the second?
Mm-hmm.
So all in favor? I'm just a figurehead there.
Thank you very much.
Bye, men.
So next, we go to the MMA voting ballot. No, excuse me, that was old business, that was appointments. So we would go to 20, 007. Consider select board participation and orientation to the Incident Command System, ICS, for executives and senior officials on October 15th, 2019. Why don't we just do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay, so would that be the full select board would go to that?
I would very much like to see the full select board at that meeting, and hopefully at the same time, so we can do the training together and hear each other's questions and things like that, so.
And that, and that'll be, where will that be?
That's usually in Augusta at the.
Like the Armory or something?
At the headquarters there, it's not, it's.
It's right behind the sheriff's office.
Big flat building.
Or it's in the. Or it's in the basement of the sheriff's.
It's a county building, then.
Yeah, the sheriff's office.
Any chance that we can do that in the evening?
Uh, that'd be my recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, just let me know.
They set the time, right?
Yes, it's October 15th, six to eight P.M.
So there'll be other people, quite a few other people there?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there was an option for a, a ten-thirty, twelve-thirty session, but I think the six to eight would work best for us.
Yeah.
Um, and the sooner we sign up, the better, so, um, if you want to take a, a, a motion, I can, uh, sign everybody up, or maybe I can just do it.
I don't think you need a motion on that.
All right, I'll just do it.
So, we'll participate, sign up.
But we'll have to post it as a meeting.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Oh, which turns up something else.
Do we need to post that as a meeting?
Well, we're all gonna be there.
I mean, I, I wouldn't make a notice. I'm not sure I would call the meeting. I would just put a...
We're not going to, we're not going to do any business.
Exactly.
We'll be at a joint training.
Abundance of caution, I would just put it out there to the public, yep. Yeah.
So, is everybody okay with October 15th?
Yeah, that, that's all they're offering.
Do we get a teacher?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That's my mother's birthday.
Oh, jeez, we're really going up against it there. Uh, the consider the 2019th, uh, MMA voting ballot, that's the Maine Municipal Association.
Last time I think we gave Eric the authorization to input our vote.
Yeah, and I read over the, um, the proposed members and, um, I think they're balanced good representatives, yeah.
It's a good, yeah, good, good slate.
I work with John Beekman, who's, uh, the chair of the re- of the Fayette Select Board on the Solid Ways Committee, and he is top-notch.
I love his world.
Mm-hmm.
So I would make a motion that we, um, appoint the town manager to sign for us, um, voting for the four candidates that are listed on the ballot. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to cast that ballot by instructing the town manager to vote for the four individuals as noted on the ballot. Um, is there any discussion for that, in, in reference to that? Seeing none, all in favor? Great. Um, so the only other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to discuss moving the August meeting, if possible, um, and this is for a personal matter, so if it is not possible to everybody's schedule, that's fine, I'll live with that. So right now we're meeting on August 19th. How difficult would it be for people to meet on August 12th?
The day after Heritage Days, so eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Twelve!
And then he's the 13th, he's at the union meeting house.
I'm just, I'm just all up in that week.
Like the 12th.
Uh, I can meet the 12th.
I can make the 12th. If Ralph is mobile, yes.
I, I should be semi-ambulatory by then.
Aren't we all?
Would you be more so on the 19th?
Doesn't matter, I'll get here one way or the other.
We do have an elevator.
I just want to be able to drive myself and not have to ask my significant other to drive me.
It's okay, that's what we're there for.
We can stick you up, Ralph.
That's right, she can go, she can drop you off.
So is everybody good for the 12th?
Yeah, let's do 12, eight-twelve, eight-one-two.
That's gonna work for you, Dennis? You won't crash out on this?
Bunny, I'm ready, I'm ready for you.
You'll be a shagging, clobbering mass of...
Why, Heritage Days!
Bees, it's Heritage Days, twitch.
We do have the select board meeting for the 16th.
Of September?
Right, and so what I would propose is for the August 12th meeting, that we also try to set the October through the end of the year agenda, uh, meeting dates.
Meeting dates.
Yeah, we'll try to do that and...
We'll put that on the agenda.
That was some good feedback we got today.
Yeah.
So, great.
I agree. I, I, listen, I'm, I'm, sometimes I don't know when they are.
I move it, will you adjourn?
I second that emotion.
All in favor?
Oh!
We are adjourned.
Get out of here!
Thank you, everybody.